Would you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schim?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt? Mrs. Juon?
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Emotion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. First up on the dockets is the mayor's budget. Which way I do this thing? Alright, mission in the mayor's office. To run a multimillion dollar taxpayer funded government entity for the citizens of Waterloo. COO for over 500 employees. And direct reports for the department heads. Just has a general statement up there about the state of Iowa code with the mayor as well. This is a organizational structure which is... Is that updated? Somebody's missing.
No.
A bunch of people are missing. Alright, that needs to be updated. And is this the right one?
Nope, your org chart is outdated.
Oh my gosh.
I think it's outdated, yeah.
I think so, it's still people... Still, Mark Rice is still here. So, we have a task force meeting this Friday and we're gonna have this updated and then we'll get council a copy of all the updates on here as well. Alright, just some of the different areas, speaking appearances, speaking requests, panels, and reoccurring segments. I don't even see the heart for the city on there either, but some of the different areas. And then the KXEL is probably about once a month, so that number, gotta update that number a while. Some of the different things that have happened. The shared services task force we're working on. Project Paus, public safety focus, employment programs. Legislative discussions and adoption, hopefully a strategic plan. Some of the highlights and accomplishments are listed there as well of public image appearances. Just a few of the boards and committees or councils that have an opportunity to serve on. As well...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I see on here the, with the highlights and accomplishments, the mayor's fireworks. Just to be clear for the public, that is actually funded by Main Street, correct?
No, that was private funding and Main Street has some support, but I raised the funds.
But it wasn't, just so that the people at home are clear, that wasn't funded by taxpayer money or anything, that was a...
That was, yeah, private funding.
Private funding, okay.
I have administrative assistant, Michelle, and there's a list of some of the calls and stuff that makes it through. She screens the majority of calls and emails, but still end up probably with about 50, 60 maybe a day, even after she screens the ones and take care of some of the minor things we have in office, phone calls, resource for information on who to contact. So, just a bunch of different duties as well. Communications director is part-time. And part of strategic goal number four was the enhancement of the image. So I've been doing work there. We had a presentation of our strategic plan a little while ago where it's able to outline some of the different areas and different things that are taking place. We will have Drew Conrad back within the next, I can't remember when, Kelly, for the...
It'll be the 26th, I believe.
Twenty-sixth for, to get the new council engaged in the strategic planning process as well, which you asked for, so we are moving forward with that. Just some highlights, communications and marketing plans, put together committee. Working, a big one, livability publication, who do something to highlight great things taking place in Waterloo. Work with the various departments listed on there. Help with awards and acknowledgements, special events, and a myriad of other things. Website maintenance and strategies. And we do work with interns as well. Take a look. Now, we have about a, close to 1,200 Facebook followers, June 2017. Twitter page, 98, and folks that have visited the new website, about 255,000 page views as well. Just a comment or a quote from what we received last week from Councilman Rob Green, talking about our social media efforts. Alright, so that's pretty much it. Where do I go to next?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That, is that the 26th of this month or 26th of March?
I think that's...
February 26th.
So a week from today?
Yep, I just double checked.
What, before our meeting or what?
It'll be a work session.
Oh.
Yeah. And that was, I think our three new council members wanted to have their voices heard in there as well, so we got that set up coming up here pretty soon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, for one, I've sat down and talked with Councilman Rod Green from Cedar Falls, and he definitely has a good insight on social media and things like that. I know I've heard in some discussions, some folks think that the communications director is not necessary for the city, but with my marketing background and what I know that, I'd say that is extremely essential to the image of Waterloo. And I would also like to say that it's just, it provides a good image. Some of the folks up here campaigned on, you know, helping the image of Waterloo. And I think this is an extremely essential position for the city, and I think it does a lot of good things. I think it's very well needed, so.
Thank you, sir. What part do we go to now? Alright, so the budget impacts, the base was 292,000. A 2.5 reduction is 7,311, and 5% is 14,622 as well. So we are working on how to realize those savings right now. Where's, and then where's council? Is that part of council then?
Council, I don't know if the presentation got done for them.
Okay. Which council member did your PowerPoint? What is, what is the budget for council?
Even that, we're doing it together.
Little budget for council. Seventy-two thousand nine forty-eight. Of that, 1,008 has been budgeted for the iPad data charges, which are going to be higher this year. The contract went up, so I know we don't have enough in that line item. We do have $1,500 available that's been budgeted in travel. Otherwise, it's simply salaries plus payroll taxes.
Any questions?
So are you covering the city council then too, or no?
Yeah, she just read. She just read. I mean, city council is basically salaries, I think there's 1,500 for travel, and about a thousand or so increase for data, data coverage, but I mean, it's, it's pretty lean.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, I guess with those two, first of all, you know, referring to what, how we're remunerated, I refer to it basically as a stipend to cover the costs of what we do, you know, in the jobs that we do. And I know that that money is used up for different things, but as with past people sitting where you are, Mr. Mayor, or sitting where we are, I say the same thing, that I would hope that we would also look at a 2.5% increase or above that, and what that would, how that would impact, and a 5% as well as a 1% increase, 1% decrease, and then finally, if there was a one-time money ask for something that is felt necessary in both of those, the city council and the mayors. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So the travel for city council, that 1,500, is that things like, I know, Councilwoman Klein and I went together, and I know Councilwoman Juon went to the Iowa League of Cities, is that for things like that?
Yes, sir.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, in light of kind of our budget and our tax situation, rollbacks possibly for the city in general not coming through, I don't know how we could ever ask for an increase in our budget, but I don't know if that's realistic. But it does look like over the last couple of years, the budget has been increased in both dues and memberships, and travel.
Where are you, Bruce? Are you on the council budget?
Oh, I'm just looking at the 2019 budget narrative. Going the budget activity, right, Bruce? Budget activity, yeah. So is that something that's good? Is there a reason why that has jumped up considerably over the last two years, or is that just, those things are going up?
Is that for council or me?
It shows, I think that's you, Mr. Mayor, it's, well...
It should say at the top if it's mayor or council. What is the amount you're looking at?
It's Fund 010, then it says mayor, Activity 8200.
Okay, that's mayor's.
So I think it's the mayor's fund. So, just looks like it's went up pretty much, you know, let's see, dues and memberships went up from 7857 to, looks like it's gonna be around 11,000. And then travel went from 3,400 to 5, which seems to be pretty consistent though, so just seems a bigger jump than even like a 2.5%.
So probably the only, only change would be the conference of mayors, which is one you know that brought about $100,000 into the city. So, I took a look at, from National League of Cities to the Conference of Mayors, to some of these other areas, and thought about which one we got the best return on investment. I think I probably ended up, since I've been elected, probably been to DC maybe five, six times or so. The city has paid for or partially funded only three of those trips, so I've spent a significant amount of my, my own dollars gone, plus the Indianapolis trip. So this doesn't even, this doesn't even cover, like even part of some of the things that I've done to represent the city. And then there has been an increase in some of the dues. Which ones were the increases? The, we had some increases in a couple of things we belong to, haven't we? Any of them? Where's like the intercon? It's in its own.
But you're right.
So one or two of them just have had an increase overall, just in belonging to them. And these are some of the ones that are more local. So it, this doesn't even cover even a partial of what I actually spend out of my pocket. And yeah, I'm gonna defer from Mr. Morrissey's request. I'm not going to increase any, any of them. That's not something that's absolutely needed or necessary, or any one-time ask. I'm just happy to work with all of you every day.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that those are requests that I was making. I'm not saying you're gonna do it, I'm just asking what it would be. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Jacobs, for you?
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, on page two of your budget worksheet, the total, mayor's expense total in 2016 was 204,000, and now in 19, it's 274,000, so roughly a 30% increase. So is that primarily for your communications person?
Yeah.
Okay. And then below there, I guess it'd be on page three, are funds of about 17,650 that three years ago didn't exist, or two years ago, I guess, didn't exist. So what, what are those for? Are those what Councilman Jacobs was asking about, or what is that?
I thought he was asking about my travel budget.
Okay, well, I mean, but that's got travel, that's got meetings, that's got workshops.
So with the communications director position, that was a position that we split down the middle with a center for arts position, I think it was a visitor's services position. So that's where that, the position came from. The other items on there are things related to what we believe we need as far as communication, reaching out to different publics, and some of the things that we just listed as accomplishments. So those are related to the budget for that position.
Councilman Schmidt, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? I think some of those travel things that you have in there, I think those are indispensable. The only thing I would like to see, especially when you look at the ROI, they're bringing back $100,000 to the community when it only cost us a couple thousand dollars, I think that's, that's great. One of the things I would like to see, though, is, and I wish we saw those with a lot more of the travel that happens throughout with city employees, is if there was some kind of a report when they come back, or something like that. I know my company has sent me to Colorado, they've sent me to Chicago, they've sent me out to California, and every time I come back from that trip, I'm required to give some sort of update on what happened with that training, or, or that, that sort of thing, even if it's just a five, 10-minute, you know, quick PowerPoint, or whatever that might be, I think that would be, that'd be helpful, so that, you know, the citizen's gonna see what they're getting, gonna bang for their buck, sort of thing, so.
And to previous council's credit, that has been, that has been asked for as well. Kelly, do we even have anything in our shared goodies or repository yet of where those can go?
As I get reports, I send them out to council.
Okay, so...
But it's as I get reports.
Okay.
Just a note on time, we're at 3:30.
Any other questions? How many do we have? We have...
We have Kent, and then, then it's on to CIP.
So culture and arts is going to fit within? Any other questions for me? Come on, Kent.
Go up, Michelle, up towards the top. 219.
Oh, shoot, picked the wrong one. I wonder why we can't find it. There we go.
Do you need to get close to this, or is it word from here? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me, let's roll.
Alright. Cultural and arts. Our mission is to stimulate inquiry, provoke dialogue, and connect people through the arts. And we operate primarily under the auspices of the Waterloo Center for the Arts. The cultural and arts department provides free and low-cost cultural opportunities and amenities for the citizens of all ages. Our cultural and arts programs improve quality of life in the Cedar Valley, they draw visitors to Waterloo, and create a positive economic impact. In FY17, we served 157, 628 visitors, and that represents more than a 28% increase over the previous year. We hosted or presented 1,261 programs and events, and that is more than 25% increase over the previous year. And we served 22,636 children and parents in our Phelps Youth Pavilion, our award-winning arts-based children's museum, and that figure is up by more than 10% over the previous year as well. So our numbers are looking good, moving in the right direction. We presented 36 exhibitions at the Center for the Arts and in off-site locations around the community. We try to utilize about every square inch we have at the Center for the Arts and fill it with art. One of the highlights of last year's exhibition program was an exhibit by Wayne Coyne called King's Mouth, which, if any of you don't know, Wayne Coyne is the lead singer of the Flaming Lips, an internationally known rock band, and so that exhibit really brought in new audiences for us. In fact, for the opening, we had people drive in from several surrounding states, and it was not uncommon on the weekends to have lines of people waiting to get in and experience the exhibit installation. And just, you know, we're talking about programs and budgets here, just kind of an example, we try to do a lot with the budget that we have, and because of the wonderful facilities and staff that our city affords us with, we're able to do even more, leverage additional dollars and resources. This particular exhibition didn't cost us a dime in terms of exhibit rental fee. Wayne shipped the exhibit in on his dime, he came and stayed here. He sent a crew for a week leading up to the exhibit to install the show, put it all together, and then he had them come back and tear it down at the end. So, it's not all of, a lot of it's about dollars and cents, but not all of it. And last year, we added more than 150 works of art to the permanent collection, and again, it's not all about dollars and cents, because people value our museum and the collection. It's amazing, they call us up and say, if you have a truck and you'll come and get it, I have art for you. So, most of our collection has been built through gifts. We offer a very wide range of programs and services, including art exhibitions, one of which is our upcoming Waterloo K-12 art exhibit. We offer just a very diverse series of classes, workshops, and lectures, as well as concerts, dance, and theatrical performances. We house the Waterloo Municipal Band. Located within our facility are the Waterloo Community Playhouse and Blacack Children's Theater, and we also house the Kudkolo Bosnian Dance Troupe as well. We present a number of festivals and cultural celebrations throughout the year, and our facilities are very popular for civic functions, private and community events, things like conferences, fundraisers for local nonprofits, awards banquets, weddings, both within the Center for the Arts and at the Riverloop Amphitheater, and then we also manage the Waterloo Boathouse as well. Waterloo Center for the Arts serves audiences, youth through seniors, with programs accessible to all regardless of income. We really work to make sure that our services are available without economic barriers. To that end, we offer numerous free exhibits, concerts, and events. We have a special, even though we have a very modest admission fee for the youth pavilion, we also offer Dollar Days on the third Thursday of every month, and Saver Sundays, discounts for youth pavilion admissions. We offer tuition scholarships for art classes to those who need those, and we participate in the Keycard Program as well as the Blue Star Museum Program. And then we also have tours that are subsidized for preschoolers, daycares, and school groups with support from the RJ McElroy Trust and Cedar Valley Promise. We offer special events for youth, including arts camps, Easter Bunny brunch, no-school playdays, trick-or-treat at the youth pavilion, breakfast with Santa. Actually, this year we had Rudolph, a live reindeer there for that, and New Year's Eve celebration for children. We have a number of larger annual events. Culture Fest, which is a partnership with the Waterloo Schools, that takes place in April of every year. It's, it's one of our favorite events of the year, it's a little bit chaotic because we have several thousand people in the building, all within a two-hour period, to experience the tastes, some of the dancing, just different elements of the cultures that make up the Cedar Valley. Fiesta de Mayo, actually that's a celebration of Latino culture that, actually that's gonna change this year, move from May to September for Latino Heritage Month. Stem and Stein, an annual beer, food, and wine tasting event. Our Riverloop Rhythms, free Friday night concerts that we alternate with the Friday Looz. We have a Holiday Arts Festival that showcases the work of 40 to 60 artists prior to the holiday season. This past year, the mayor brought his fireworks celebration to the Riverloop Amphitheater, and we also partnered with Main Street Waterloo to have some of the My Waterloo Day events at the amphitheater, including a lighted boat parade. And we participate in the world's greatest spring break. We have an outstanding permanent art collection, including Midwest art, we have a fine collection of works by Grant Wood and other regional artists, American decorative arts, public art within our community, and a collection of international folk art. It's a varied collection, but it also includes the world's largest public collection of Haitian art. And you might think that it's odd that Haitian art would be here in Waterloo, but it's a good thing, the collection was started by a local couple, and it's grown to be world-recognized. We were able to host the Haitian Art Society Conference last fall, and that conference brought in participants from California, Louisiana, Florida, Washington DC, New York, Illinois, Minnesota, and Iowa, and Haiti, actually. Currently, we have some pieces from our collection on view in Chicago at the Haitian-American Museum of Chicago, and also at Cornell College, and people... And people actually come from all over the country to Waterloo, Iowa, to see our Haitian art collection. And I'm kind of surprised, a lot of times when I will go places, that people have heard of this collection. I shouldn't be surprised, but you know, you never know when, that you're making those connections. We work with partners throughout the community to realize our mission and to help them realize theirs as well. There's just a partial list there. Couple I would point out, we work quite a bit with the youth art team, the great things that they're doing in our community. We also work with Say Yes to Technology, a group of kid, young kids that are using technology to learn and to express themselves. And we look forward to continue those programs and many more in the year to come. Just, in relation to our budget, something that doesn't show up on the budget as well is the Center for the Arts also has a friends group that works throughout the year to raise additional funding for the center. And so they raised thirty to forty thousand additional dollars that they pour back into the program. That's why you won't see a travel line in our budget. They fund the travel that we do, also other program expenses they put the bill for.
Kent, I think there's some great things going on over at the Center for the Arts. I would like to see you guys do a little bit. I know I get Laura's emails on a regular basis of what's going on there. I would, I would like to see a little bit more marketing over there. One of the things I think maybe would be good for you guys to look into is i-if you did some more movies over on the, at the amphitheater. I know last year for My Waterloo Days, they did a movie down there. They partnered with Marcus Theaters, and my, my kids loved it. It was, it was a great time. So it, I don't know if that would be a good revenue source for you guys over there. That, that might be maybe something to look into, so maybe if you could look into that, see if you can partner with Marcus Theaters and, and possibly get some movies. I know the, the, over at the Buck Stadium, they do that as well. They do movies at the ballpark. But maybe if we can do that, even if it happens on the same night as Friday Lou, I think it's a, for those folks that don't want to go down and do that kind of thing over at the park, maybe if they want to bring their families over and do that, that would be a good revenue source for you.
And we, we are discussing that with Main Street Waterloo in kind of expanding and continuing that based on the experience that we had last year with that movie. That was a great event.
Awesome. Yeah, it was, it was a great time. I know my, my kids loved it, so.
How many of your employees live in Waterloo?
I think all of them except for one. And that's not including part-time employees. We use a lot of UNI students for part-time employees, but our full-time staff, all except one, live in Waterloo. And I think they're homeowners, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Kent, one of the, first of all, thank you very much for, for what you do. The Center for the Arts is a destination point for a lot of people outside the community as well as inside the community. And that's just, not for Riverloop Rhythms Group, but for all your different events. And you got a great gift shop, by the way. It's absolutely unbelievable. And the stuff you got in there is incredible. But I was wondering, you know, when you talk about impacts, one of the things, looking at different revenues, you know, that, we're talking about cut, cut, cuts, but nobody here is talking about increasing different revenue streams. And I'm wondering if there's been any thought about increasing, like, I see in here there's reimbursement for services, that amount, like a ten thousand dollars. There's also facility rental fee, both at the Center for the Arts, Riverloop, event facilities. I don't know if there's been any thought of raising those a buck or two or anything like that to help raise additional revenue, revenues, Kent.
Well, we actually are always trying to raise revenues and project additional revenues. More than raising, you know, the rates themselves, what we've been doing that's been moving those revenues forward and up is making sure that, you know, we're being comprehensive about what we're charging for and collecting for all of those things, making sure that, you know, our operations are such that we're maximizing those revenues. Like, for instance, now, to rent a room, you have to sign a contract, you have to pay your deposit upfront. So that's one of the reasons that our revenues have been going up and we're projecting some additional revenues for next year, potentially.
All right, we'll take one more question before we move on. Anyone else? You want to show your budget impact real quick?
In terms of the budget impacts, obviously, the first line is current service level. To realize a two-point-five percent reduction, we're kind of in a unique situation this year. We have a retirement, and we have the opportunity to kind of roll back that salary a little bit, which would help offset some of that, that cut. You know, to realize a five percent cut, we'd have to roll back pay rates on a couple of other positions and make some cuts to some of our expense lines that relate to exhibits, interpretive materials, and so forth. So we might cut back on a few of our exhibits and kind of some of the accompanying materials and that sort of thing to realize those reductions.
And I forgot to mention it for the other departments, too, but you've come in each year a little bit under, even under the, what the proposal was the year before. But we definitely want to acknowledge that as well. Any other questions before we move on?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the other thing that I've said to all the departments is a two-point-five percent and five percent increase. What that would do, what that would do for your department, as well as one percent decrease, one percent increase, and then a one-time money ask. And that's just a request that I have to see where things would be with those kinds of additions, those kinds of requests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, just really quickly, do we have debt service? And then CIP?
I was just going to make a few comments about debt service. We don't have a presentation, but you have the numbers in, available to you, I think, in Novus. Our debt service fund is how we make our, basically our mortgage payment on all the property and assets that we build and make capital improvements to throughout the year. So our total expenses, while they're about fourteen-point-eight million, just under seven-point-six million of that is actually repaid with property taxes. The other six-point-six million, about half of that, is paid from the sewer fund for bonds borrowed by the sewer fund to build sewer improvements. And the other part is items being repaid by using tax increment financing. And it's repaying items used in those TIF districts. So the debt service impacts, if we were to drop it two and a half percent, would reduce the resources, I think, by about two-hundred thousand dollars. And I'm working with Spear. We're, I think we're going to be able to do that this year. We're proposing that we would have an eight-million-dollar bond issue, and that's what we would repay on that and keep that going.
Yes, sir.
So, so Michelle, I was, as I was going through the budget the other night, I had a couple of computers going. I had a bunch of papers everywhere. What, what's a good rule of thumb for the debt service levy? Is, is there one? I mean, I was, I was trying to, you know, wrap my head around that a little bit better and, and figure out, you know, what, I mean, if we bond for a million, does that equal ten cents? What, I mean, what's a good rule of thumb, I guess?
Well, so our debt service levy for fiscal eighteen was about three dollars and eleven cents. I think what the right amount is depends on the community. Obviously, we have, there's a state constitutional debt limit that we can't borrow more than five percent of our assessed value, which we're nowhere near right now, or maybe at a little over half. So if you were thinking you were going to borrow right up to that limit, I guess our debt service levy could be a lot higher. You just need to balance your needs with what you feel your community is willing or can repay. And so many of the capital needs we have are mandated to us by the federal or state government sometimes. So we're issuing more bonds probably than we might want to, but when we have to do things to comply with laws, we have to do them. So I don't know that I have a rule of thumb about how much it should be. It's whatever we...
But when we're, so, so I mean, if we bond a million, what, what does that add to the, to that, that three-eleven?
I don't know that I know that by million. It's, it's, we, we try to keep our bond issues at fifteen years, so we want to be on a fairly rapid repayment. Moody's usually likes that. I can do some calculating and get back to you. It's, the fixed costs are higher when you do a smaller bond issue, so there's, it wouldn't be a set amount per million.
Thank you. I was just trying to wrap my head around that and find the right, you know, what, what the, what the golden number is, I guess.
If you figure that out, we probably all want to know that number.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Noel and Tim?
So Tim is passing out the proposed CIP spreadsheet that you have in front of you. As we've discussed before, the CIP is the Capital Improvements Program, so it's essentially the, the mechanism or the, or the plan that we put together for the city's future needs. It is a five-year plan that is updated annually so that you can kind of get a larger grasp of all the projects that are out there, department by department, subject matter by subject matter. At the same time, it's updated annually to look at the city's needs on an annual basis in terms of projects, in terms of priorities, in terms of new things that may have come to light since adopting the plan last year. Ultimately, the CIP will also guide your, Michelle, in the bond issue in terms of coming up with funding for these projects. And Tim didn't give me one. Thank you, sir. As you can see on the summary page, on, on page one there, we start the process off by all the departments submitting requests in for projects and needs that they have. As you can see, for fiscal year nineteen, we had sixteen-point-nine-nine million in requests. And we have recommended, under the approved column there, is our recommendations of spending eight million dollars in bonding this year. So going down, cutting down from that sixteen-point-nine-nine to the eight million. Essentially, as we're going through, you know, it's, it's not an easy task to look through all these projects and figure out what can get funded this year and what can't. But we're relying on the, the expertise and the priorities of the departments, as well as looking at some other factors. As we go through these and try to make these recommendations for cuts, we first look at all the mandates. There's a lot of federal mandates out there for the sewer. There's some for the levies. There's some for tree removals along the levies, levy improvements, things like that, that we are under a strict timeline to get updated or fixed or renovated or rehabilitated. So we look at trying to keep those fully funded. We then work to keep all grant matches for approved grants fully funded. So if we have a grant from the gaming or from some other entity, we try to keep those fully funded if those are approved, because again, then we're bringing in other funding sources to help supplement the city's funding, which will help save us money in terms of us trying to spread out all this to get projects done. We then work to keep funding for active or phased projects fully funded. As you look through these on a project-by-project basis, and I'll, I'll use engineering as an example, some years we will have eight-hundred thousand dollars or two-hundred thousand dollars, whatever that amount is, in there for design of a project. And then on the following year, we will have a million dollars or two million in there for the actual construction. So we try to break it out year by year in the five-year plan as to when we think the funds will actually be spent, based on construction timelines, design timelines, acquisitions of easements, and things like that. So again, looking at phasing of projects sometimes to get things done, because it's difficult to bond it all in one year. We work to eliminate medium and low-priority projects, but keep the high-priority projects by departments to move ahead. This year, the high-priority projects by department actually totaled up to thirteen-point-one million, just in high priority. So again, we had to start to cut into those high-priority projects, knowing that department heads have listed them as a high priority. We have to try and, again, pick and choose which ones we think are the highest of the high priorities. We work to identify gaming requests in there. So on the sheet, you'll see as you go through it, department by department, there's some in there. There's an actual gaming column. And you can see on that front sheet some of those where we have looked at what the Gaming Commission has been giving out to other communities or what they've given out in the past to Waterloo, to look at which ones we think can get match money. Again, to, to further spread our money out and use outside funding sources to move, to move ahead with these projects. After this is sent out and these recommendations are made, all the department heads can still rearrange the monies within theirs. So if Pat had seven-hundred thousand in his, and he decided, hey, I need thirty thousand here instead of here, he can still move that around as long as it still totals up to that seven-hundred thousand. I mean, again, that's where we're depending upon the department heads' expertise to know, hey, something's changed since I, since I submitted information on this, or something's a little bit different, and based on the exact quantities I need in each, in each one. Ultimately, we're setting this for a date of hearing for next Monday. Again, as the council looks through this, and I know we've met with the majority of you, I think five of the seven of you we've had a chance to sit down and speak with. If you have specific questions for the departments as to what, why they prioritize something, I first recommend you talk to them, then let us know, or they can let us know. Any additional information in consultation with the council as to making any changes or any, any efforts in there. But ultimately, it's up to the council to approve the CIP to guide that bonding. Anything to add? Other than that, we really just wanted to have this time, if you have any comments or questions with the department heads here, especially to go through anything that you've seen in the, in the plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a, so Noel, I don't, this wasn't the sheet when I turned around and asked you this. The one I think was, I think Tim called it the current bond sheet. Was that right? The, the separate sheet that you gave me the other day? So on there, it goes back and it shows the bond requests and everything that's been requested over the past five years. So one of the things from five years ago was is that the police department has two-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-four dollars and some odd cents in furniture and equipment, I think. What, I, I guess I don't understand why we haven't, is that the correct amount? Twenty-one sixty-four?
Yep.
I, I guess I don't understand why we haven't spent that. Are we saving for something, or?
Frank Crowe, Captain Administration, we are not saving for anything. We use that to buy chairs as they break. We remodeled the interview rooms, put new carpet in the interview rooms, and it's gotten down to two-thousand dollars. There has been some requests for some of our investigators to have stand-up desks. That's a new, we're gonna, we're gonna have a call. Thing, we'd like to look at buying those for that, but two-thousand dollars does not buy very much of the furniture or the desk equipment that we have.
Sure, okay, thank you. And then my other thing is, so I see on here we're making, and maybe even Sharon could, could answer this. We're, we're making four-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars in gaming requests. Obviously, you all know I work. I walk by every, every year, every day, and I see a check that says five-point-one million that was giving in gaming grants. Pre, I, I don't understand why, you know, that, that's only, what, that's ten, ten percent? Yeah, ten, ten percent that we're going for of, of those gaming grants. I guess I just don't understand why the city isn't going for, for more, more of those gaming grants. And maybe even, I mean, Sharon, you were on the board, maybe you can attest to, to why we're not, or, or Mr. Mayor. I, I, I just think that, you know, you know, when, when that facility came in, you know, we, we heard that we were gonna, you know, have taxpayer relief, things like that. I, I think we'd be, we should be going for the full five, almost. I mean, I...
Full five thousand? Five million?
Five million, sure. Put it in there. What, what, I mean, what are they gonna do, say no? Yes?
Well, we, we have about a million dollars right now, even in requests. Put out a, one with Keith for the airport... Well, we, we have about a million dollars right now even in requests. Um, uh, put out a, uh, one with Keith for the airport. Um, whereas Eric Thorson just put out one for seven hundred fifty thousand. So that's a million right there uh, that we have out. Michelle?
Well, I just wanted to remind everyone, it's my understanding, gaming usually requires us to have a fifty percent match fund. So we, I, it would be pretty hard for us to request five because we'd have to have five sitting here in bond money to match it with.
Duly noted.
Well, and let me add that they are guaranteed to give twenty-five percent to WDC, um, for downtown Waterloo projects. So I'm assuming a lot of that might not be in here yet. Um, but they do give a substantial amount to, to Waterloo. And some of it you might not bond for either, would you? Or do you bond for every bit of the match for a grant?
Sometimes we're fortunate to have other sources, but honestly, we're very restricted.
But like for university, some of that's DOT money.
Correct. That would be one.
So it's not gonna show up on, at least the full amount's not gonna show up on here.
Yes. But I, but I think, um, the comment is to make sure we maximize every opportunity we have to, to partner with folks as well. I think that's what I'm hearing.
It, it just, it just seems to me like four hundred and twelve thousand just isn't, I, I don't, and, and maybe it's just because I walk by that big check every day and see it for five million and I'm like, why?
Grab it for us?
But yeah, we definitely do. Um, um, and there's other projects too, but, and other sources as well. But you're right, we need to be, continue to be aggressive.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Two questions, Noel. Um, one on here, the police department requested six hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And we're quite a ways from that. So can you tell us, what are we not funding on that?
In a larger part, actually just plays into the last conversation you just had. So they are asking for some more funds for their, uh, police, uh, additional building for, for evidence storage. And, uh, we're believing that we can get, uh, the three hundred thousand dollars that they were requesting from that, from, to match their existing bond money from gaming.
From gaming, okay.
Specifically since some funding was just given to Cedar Falls for a new police building, so.
And then a broader, uh, question, Noel, uh, you may not love this question, but a lot of folks have asked, why can't we give up a little bit of our TIF funds to support some of the infrastructure uh, request on here, just spread across the board, not just picking one department or another. But, you know, let's say, um, we could give up fifteen percent or so of the, some TIF funds to put back. I mean, I know you want every penny you can get, but to put back and to support the infrastructure that we might not be able to bond for, is that something that you would consider at this time?
So remember, the TIF money, if you want to use it at a hundred percent, can only be used in the TIF districts. And we have a lot of needs in there to build out the water sewer road infrastructure in there so that we can put businesses in there as a, as a, so we can not only attract them to those areas, but then be ready to go and have shovel-ready sites. If we were to lease, release a million dollars from the northeast TIF, um, now you're all of a sudden only getting about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, in city funds. Um, so you're giving up five hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you otherwise could have had to help improve the city, um, to go towards something else. Um, so again, you know, trying to be, again, utilize our funding for, to its, to its utmost and, and getting as many things done as possible. We, we believe the better financial model is to keep it in the TIF districts at this point to build out our infrastructure some more. But in the future, once we have had those, those land areas developed further, um, much like our counterparts to the west and have roads, infrastructure, water, sewer and all that ready to go, we believe it's our best practice at this point to utilize that to build out those areas and attract businesses.
Just a follow-up question then. Um, knowing the importance of our airport, it really is a competitive thing that we can offer above many, a lot of those cities in the state. Uh, airport requested five hundred and twenty-three thousand for the nineteen budget and we've approved fifty thousand. Talk about that a little bit or?
Sure. And, and Keith could probably touch on this a little bit more too. But again, the airport by its very designation from the federal government is supposed to be as self-sufficient as possible. And so they are utilizing their funds as well to match, uh, federal monies and all that coming in there. At the same time, they've just had, or they're just finishing up a pavement management report of that whole area. So we'd kind of like to get a better feel for that, get some final numbers to that whole pavement management system out there, um, and look at those and kind of determine the whole future of the airport. For this one year, um, we tried to supplement some of their high priority needs, um, while we're kind of looking at the, it's kind of, it's kind of similar to the, uh, city facility management. We're working on a building audit there. So we have some funds going into city facilities, but we'd really like to get the audit done to better prioritize and look at the bigger picture, um, and move ahead with larger funding in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the library. Um, I'm a patron of the library and those steps are treacherous. And I understand we even need to do some work up on the corners of the building for fear some of that stuff's gonna fall on our heads. Plus, um, the, the books, the, the ability to buy books and keep our collection updated. And all I see is forty thousand going for improvements outside the building.
Mr. Bozen is here. He can probably talk to you a little bit about they are, they are planning on some projects on, and we've even been looking at the potential of gaming funds for improvements of the steps. If we think that'll be an acceptable gaming request, um, to make them a little bit cooler, maybe, maybe change the entire width of them and narrow that out. But um, they are looking at some existing bond funds to fix some of those needed repairs.
It's such an old building.
And in terms of the books, I think it's a separate funding source that's used to go after books.
In general, we don't use bond money to purchase books. That's generally operating money.
Mark, would you like to talk about, uh, some of the things that we have done, um, over there? They've had some challenges.
At the library?
Yeah.
Well, uh, this year, uh, we've done some wall repairs. We had a, just took it before finance, uh, some painting that needs to be done with those wall repairs. We've had to make some elevator improvements. We've had to basically redo all the master fire control system in the library. Next week on finance will be to do some, uh, horns and strobes and things like that, just to finish out the fire safety issues at the library. Uh, we have, uh, identified like last year, we had a cornerstone that was loose and we got that repaired. Uh, the other ones are still there and, and, and they're somewhat okay, but they weren't dialed originally when the library was, or when the post office was built. And so, uh, basically what we'd like to do is on a step-by-step basis, case-by-case basis, just take off a cornerstone, lift it up, re, reattach it and put it back in. The steps are a priority. Uh, Noel, uh, mentioned that we were looking at, uh, trying to do some gaming fun things. We want to bring the steps in, and right now they're double wide, bring them into the center and do some landscaping, kind of dress it up. So that's kind of where we're at with the library now. Down the road, as part of the city audit, building audit, we'd like to probably power wash, re-tuck point or fix up the tuck pointing and then reseal the building, the brick. So that's kind of where we're at.
And, and part of the conversation about this building audit is to make sure that we have a strategic pro, approach to what we repair on buildings so that we know when next year's CIP comes, we have a list of priority projects that goes to this building, to that building, to that one, so that we can start taking a look at like a five and ten-year approach and make those repairs. Emergencies will happen like one you just mentioned, but when we take a look at how we're using monies and, and strategically doing things, we want to make sure we're moving in the right direction. And that's the idea about the build-it audit, which is like a, kind of like a strategic plan to see where we're at with our different facilities and buildings we own.
And that's our intention is, is down the road is, we want to audit and, and review every building, uh, structurally, mechanically, uh, interior and exterior. And once we have that in place, we'll know, you know, we know kind of right now how all of our equipment is, but it's aging. And I mean, just at City Hall alone, we've had to replace air handling units. Uh, I mean, at the hazmat station, we've basically replaced all the furniture, or all the furnaces and AC units. They just went out. I mean, they're twenty-five years old. Uh, and that's, this will give us more of a management tool so we can direct and, and focus our bond money on specific needs as they come up down the road.
And, um, and to add to that point, um, Mr. Nielsen had also, um, talked about, and, and also with other buildings too, you know, taking a look at this building audit and seeing if there's some ways that we can do some more energy efficient things as well. We've talked about solar panels. Um, but before we make that decision, we want to make sure that we take a strategic approach to, to doing some of those things because there's could potentially be some significant savings realized the sources of energy. And also the C triple E, um, is doing an energy audit um, about the entire city of Waterloo, but also some of our city facilities. So we want to tie those things in together and take a long-range look at how to make our buildings safer, better and more, more efficient.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I think we have Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the, as you're speaking to the C triple E and the energy audit, I mean, the cost of energy to the, uh, people of Waterloo to supply energy to the different, uh, public facilities is probably immense. And, uh, I don't, I don't know if there's anything included in the CIP for any kind of measures that would start that infrastructure so that we can lower our energy costs with the city. Noel, I don't see anything there, but I wish that it would be included in there as a cost saver, uh, over time.
I've asked Mark to have that included.
In, in the building?
Yes, and that, that's gonna be part of the building, you know, the whole building audit and, and the whole thing with building facilities. Right now, currently, we have been replacing all of our fluorescents, uh, and with energy savers, and we've gotten extremely, uh, good amount of rebates back. But pretty much the library is totally done. We've got a, actually are gonna purchase a few more and then we'll finish that out in the basement. Uh, but then that building is, we have gone through pretty much every city facility and have gone to new, uh, new fixtures. So they're energy efficient. We will continue to work, and I've been working with a, an energy company on gas distribution so where we can hopefully save ourselves five percent on gas, our costs for gas. So, you know, we, we are looking at those things, Pat.
Okay. And, and I mean, just speaking about the library, about other facilities that have these flat roofs, what perfect places to, uh, install solar panels and have almost a basic, uh, city of Waterloo solar field on our, on our own buildings.
And part of that audit though will determine the structural integrity of the roofing system and the building itself. Uh, you know, with snow loads and everything else that we have right now, uh, depending upon what the weight of the solar equipment is, you know, we just got to make sure we're not overloading the, the rooftop.
Well, and, uh, to add to that or as an end to that would be just, do you have or are you planning to come up with some kind of idea about what the cost, uh, to the, uh, people that are paying taxes in Waterloo would be if we installed, we had that kind of changeover to clean sustainable renewable energy sources versus what we got now? And then the other part to that would be what would be the cost of investment in that to the city of Waterloo? Because we know there's gonna be a cost associated with that.
And we are working on that, to that endeavor.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
You bet.
And then the second question I had, Mr. Mayor, was, um, you know, look, and looking in this, and I know that Noel, when I met with you, I had that question, and it's about the low, medium and high priorities. And I, and not picking on you, Eric Thorson at all, but if you, if you just look at the, at the engineering one, I know that, um, uh, you know, there are, uh, high ones that are, that are picked there and, uh, there's a, a medium one that's picked there. Uh, and I, I know that there are people in those areas where they're low that see that as something that should be high. So how, uh, Noel, does it go from being low to medium to high so that it gets more attention and it would be part of the CIP?
I guess it would be a matter of you talking to the department head, um, and, you know, and, and finding out, you know, maybe getting a better understanding of why they listed it as low instead of high. You know, and I'll use two examples off the engineering one since that we were talking about, you know, as an example, the Verden Creek Levy is listed as a high two, um, but the Lower Sink Creek Improvements is listed as a low. Um, the Verden Creek Levy is being remapped right now by FEMA. If we don't add the foot and a half of freeboard to that, it'll put five hundred to six hundred homes into the floodplain that are not in the floodplain now because they will decertify that levy. So we're on a time crunch to get those improvements done, which is why it's listed as a high. The Lower Sink Creek Improvements, I know that we just did some cleaning and all that out of that area. And while some of those people may still have concerns about when it rains a lot, we believe for the most part that, you know, a lot of those improvements have been done. A lot of those improvements go out into the county that are needed in the future, which is beyond the city's jurisdiction, or we need easements. And so it's not something that's going to happen overnight anyway, even though they may think it's highly important. Based on our timeline of this year, we can't make that happen next year. Plus, we may not even have the authority to go out into the county and do some of those things. So again, it's, it's listed as a low here based on what we can actually get done. Plus, again, there's a lot of things up at the top there that may have a larger impact on a larger area. And Eric, if you want to add anything to how you listed them.
It's over here.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. Um, actually, these ratings are just for this one year. Um, if, if you notice, um, our total, just with all the high ones, was over three million, three point six million. And we're only bonding eight. I know I'm not gonna get all of it. So I have to try to pick out the ones just for this particular year that are high, medium and low. Next year, it'll change again as we complete some of these mandates and things, and some of these other things will move up. So the, out of the first nine that are all high, a lot of that's mandated things with the levees and with the bridges and, um, some ma, few maintenance things in there. So as those things kind of get wrapped up, then we'll be able to get into the, um, Saint Creeks and Delane and that sort of thing. So right now, we're just kind of overloaded with mandates. And so again, my ratings are only for this first year. It'll change again next year and some of the other things that are low will start moving.
Wait, uh, if I follow up real quick. Okay, Chris. Okay. Um, and that is, you got all these different ones listed here on the, um, what is it? Uh, two-page, well, just a one-page there. Okay. And for some reason, those different, um, projects were brought to your attention. Okay? Or my question is, this is not probably everything that engineering or any of these departments see as to put on the CIP. There's probably other things that don't even make this list, I would surmise. And I, you know, and you've got this at the request at seventeen million. And my question is, if you throw everything in that you think should be there, including the ones that didn't make this list, how much would that seventeen million, uh, increase? Just a theoretical question, Michelle. I'm, I'm not meaning to cause any pain.
Address me. Yeah. It may pass out over there.
I would just comment, certainly you're correct, Pat, that there are other things we'd like to have on the list too, but we just know there's a limited amount of funding. And so we're trying to get the things done that are mandated first and a few other things to try to keep some things moving. But we'd have to go back and look, at least for myself, to see what else is not on this list. And if you go through the actual capital improvements booklet, they're in there.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Another thing I think that we all need to remember is even though there may be a, another seventeen million, I don't know, I'm picking a number of the, in projects that we'd like to do. The reality is with the constraints on our time and all the steps you have to go through to do these projects, I don't, I don't know that we could actually accomplish it all. I just think we have a difficult time spending the money that we're already issuing. So doubling it unless, you know, when there's University Avenue project, for example, and we're not gonna be using a lot of bond money for that, but that's gonna be a huge capital project that's gonna consume a lot of resources. We will probably spend more than we would in a typical year on that project, but that's because it's one very large project. I don't know that at the same time, we can also double our bonding projects and really expect to get it all done. We don't have enough staff. I don't know that we have enough contractors even, um, that would be available to bid on them.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Noel, just a follow-up question. Um, I don't see on here any, uh, plan, or is it, or what is the plan to, uh, eventually address the swimming pools?
Excuse me. There is some funds in there under city facility management, but, uh, yeah, that was cut back and obviously we're, it's part- and obviously, it's part of the building audit, that they'll be looking at exactly what is needed for those pools, plus, there's also a lot of discussion out there, really with leisure services, city facilities, and redevelopment of different areas of the community, for what we want to do with the pools, both of them, moving forward, and there's a lot more discussion to be had, before we probably commit to a lot of funds for those, okay?
Yes, sir.
And just, as you, some of you may know, I'm working on my dissertation in environmental policy, so decreasing the city's ecological footprint is very important to me, and just to Mr. Boson, one of the things I've seen done at my place of employment, is that we actually, and it would probably help here at City Hall, is that we got rid of hand towels, or paper towels in the restrooms, and went to hand dryers, and it was a huge, by thousands of dollars, savings as well. Also, if, we're looking at some of the things, like the water fountain that we have out here, the more ecological-friendly one that we have out in the hallway out here, things like that, just hopefully, we're looking at all of those aspects, not just the bigger ones, like the solar panels and things like that. If we can do those sort of things, that decreases that line item of commodities, and, you know, less money we're spending on paper towels, even though it's just a small thing, just a, you know, another saving toward the taxpayers, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is that all?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.